And steady, um, but nothing out of the ordinary for this time of year. I did get some statistics for the third quarter, uh, July through September, and then our statistics for, uh, September itself. And Garfield Township's most densely populated township in the county. So it's, it's really no surprise when we're taking a significantly higher amount of, uh, calls for service, um, crimes in progress, and just general, um, police work. Uh, thankfully, we have not had any fatal accidents in this quarter. Uh, we have had sixty, uh, personal injury accidents or car accidents where injuries were involved. Um, that is considerably higher than the rest of the county. But again, keeping in mind our population and traffic density, that would be, uh, expected. In this past month, we've had sixteen injury accidents. We've had seventy-six, uh, minor accidents where it was only damage and no injuries to any people. And we have issued forty, uh, e-citations. That would be traffic citations that are completed through our, um, citation software. Uh, that's not counting the tickets that are written out by hand. We can still do that and those are recorded with the court as well. Um, I believe the recurring issues that I've heard and that I've seen personally would be, uh, speeding in a lot of the residential areas. We've been, uh, trying to make efforts to, to crack down on that and establish a, um, patrol presence as a deterrent. Um, myself and Deputy James Hunter, I don't know if he's been involved in a township meeting, or how many of you are familiar with him, but we've been able to do bicycle patrol at, uh, the Boardman, Boardman Lake Trail, uh, which is hall parked behind the library in Traverse City and then into, uh, Garfield Township, the Logan's Landing area, uh, Miller Creek Reserve, lots of different places we can reach with that. Um, there's, there's definitely been issues with illegal camping, illegal campfires, um, just other issues arising from the, the transient population. Um, so I think it's been a noticeable improvement in, in any area where we're able to, to make that presence because if it's an area that can't be reached by a patrol vehicle, uh, people tend to do things that they shouldn't do. So I think, uh, that's something that's been highly successful that we just started this year and are really looking forward to hopefully doing that into the fall and possibly the winter. Um, we have some, some plans for that. Um, if there's any questions, I can hopefully answer them for you or follow up with Lieutenant Raska. But, um, that's about all I have for anything that's new and noteworthy on, uh, our side.
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving on, Grand Traverse Metro Fire Chief.
Good evening, Paul Mackin, Grand Traverse Metro Fire. Uh, we'll start with, uh, our incident report, uh, for the township and metro. Uh, on the first page, I'll cover, uh, just the first four incident types. Uh, medical assist typically is our number one call. Uh, we respond to two-hundred-and-twenty-two within township, uh, three-hundred-and-twenty-six within metro as a whole. Uh, dispatch canceled route, followed that up, uh, at forty-three and fifty-one. Uh, emergency medical services, other, uh, twenty-nine for the township, forty-four in the, in metro as a whole. And then followed up with, um, motor vehicle accidents with injuries. We had eleven within Garfield Township, um, and sixteen, uh, within metro. Totals, uh, for the month, uh, September, three-hundred-and-sixty incidents in Garfield Township and five-hundred-and-twenty-eight in metro. Uh, moving on to the second page of our report, uh, these are EMS complaints, uh, for the month of September. Falls as usual, uh, number one, uh, complaint with seventy-five of those incidents within the township, uh, followed up by, uh, difficulty breathing with twenty-six, cardiac issues or chest pains over twenty-four within the township. And then, uh, unknown problems in vehicle accidents, uh, follow that up at nineteen apiece. Uh, total three-hundred-and-twenty medical incidents within Garfield Township and four-hundred-and-fifty-two, uh, in metro or the authority as a whole. On the third page are, uh, our pie charts or graphs. Uh, the first graph is our incidents by station. Um, you'll look at, uh, Station Twelve and Station, uh, One came in about twenty-eight percent of the calls, Station Eleven at twenty-four percent, uh, Station Eight at eleven percent and Station Nine at seven percent. Interesting for September, typically Station Eleven is always the busiest. It's always just a little bit busier than Station Twelve. Uh, however, this month there was a little bit of a change and Station Twelve was a little bit busier. We'll keep an eye on that, just, uh, could be construction, could be other things, uh, call types, et cetera. Um, calls totals of that five-hundred-and-twenty-eight by township, uh, sixty-eight percent of those calls were within Garfield Township, uh, twenty percent were with, were within East Bay Township and ten percent within Acme with two percent out of the area or mutual aid, uh, responses. And then the last graph, uh, are responses versus incidents. Again, uh, typically Station Twelve is usually behind. Station Eleven is, is the two primaries within Garfield Township, uh, but Station Twelve had a hundred-and-seventy-five responses from the station for the month. So again, a little bit busier month for Station Twelve. I will kind of monitor that to see if that trend continues or if it was just a bit of a one-off for September. Moving on is, is, uh, just a couple of notes on ongoing things within, uh, the authority. Uh, our plan, new plans reviewer starts Monday. Um, Chris Wilks will be starting and again, as I mentioned before, Kathy Fordice will be retiring October thirty-first. Uh, so we're excited to get Chris actually in, in the building and get him started and, and working on that. Uh, we are still, uh, working on our contract negotiations with our firefighters union. It's progressing well. We had a meeting today that was really productive. Uh, we do have two meetings scheduled for next week. Kind of getting into the financial package, so, um, a few more meetings and, um, I'm optimistic we should be, uh, you know, hopefully buttoning things up. So again, that continues to progress. Um, we did, uh, we did send out a request for proposals for some, um, renovations at Station Eight. Uh, those were sent out to some area contractors, posted on our website, posted at our admin building. We're hoping to get those back, uh, those are due back next Monday, the twentieth, uh, by four P.M. Uh, so hopefully we receive those back and we'll be presenting those to our board for discussion, uh, on the twenty-eighth at the end of the month. Uh, we did, with it being Fire Prevention Month, we did hold our annual open house at Station Eleven, uh, down the street here on October fourth. It was really warm that day, if you remember, um, but we did have a very good turnout despite the warm weather. A lot of people coming through, uh, had some good events, uh, some demonstrations, extrication, uh, demonstrated the drone, had a number of agencies, uh, from sheriffs to dispatch, uh, state, uh, you know, and, uh, MMR assisting us and helping out. So it was, uh, it was a good, good turnout. Uh, with, uh, Fire Prevention Week activities continuing through the month, Katie has been very busy. She conducted a car safety, uh, seat event at Williams Chevrolet. She had about twenty families that came there, um, so that was pretty productive. Uh, she gave a fire safety presentation at Independence Village and also attended a number of the middle schools covering the current Fire Prevention Week theme, which is, uh, charge into fire safety. It's about lithium ion battery safety in your home. So kind of targeted those midas, middle schoolers. Everybody's using devices with that lithium ion battery. So, um, wanted to make sure we kind of educate that audience. Uh, we are also, over the next coming months, we're sponsoring along with, uh, Traverse City Fire Department, our fire safety messaging billboards throughout the community. Uh, look for in November, we'll have the billboard, uh, messaging at the billboard at Barlow and Airport, uh, and then in December, our messaging will be at, uh, Cass and Airport Road at that billboard there, the new one on the hill there. Um, additionally, Captain Spencer Scanlon did graduate from the Eastern Michigan University Staff and Command Program, uh, this past Friday, October tenth. Um, if you recall, that was a ten-month, uh, program that was primarily focusing on administrative curriculum, preparing the fire officer for administrative duties. He did exceptionally well, very proud of him, so we're happy that he completed that. Uh, we also did receive some, uh, assistance from the, the power plan in terms of helping us cover the tuition for that program. Uh, our firefighters are going to be conducting their annual skills drills over the course of the next month, along with their annual physical aptitude testing. Uh, we had a couple of groups of our firefighters attend some light and fight, live fire training down at the Fire Service Institute in Illinois. Uh, get some real good hands-on experience there. We're excited about that, that they had that opportunity. Uh, there will also be, uh, upcoming, there's going to be an active threat drill, uh, conducted at the Great Wolf Lodge on, uh, October twenty-eighth. That's going to be done in conjunction with the Grand Traverse, uh, Sheriff's Office and the Great Wolf Lodge staff, so that will be happening that day. Uh, there were a couple of different, there were a number of different fires throughout the authority. Uh, just a couple to note, uh, within Garfield, uh, September sixteenth, we did have a bedroom fire at the Liv Arbers Apartments. Uh, on September twenty-first, we had a small kitchen fire, uh, at a restaurant at seventeen-ninety-six South Garfield, uh, that was remedied fairly quickly. Uh, October fourth, we had a, uh, small kitchen fire involving a cooktop at, on Orchard Circle Drive. And then we also did, uh, did perform a couple mutual aid assists to Blair Township and Paradise Township through the month. So, um, staying busy, uh, but that completes my report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the chief?
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on, Planning Department report for October twenty-twenty-five.
Well, good evening, John Syke, Planning Director. Uh, our monthly reports in your packet, I just want to highlight four items. Since there was a meeting last week with the Planning Commission, a couple of key, uh, projects. The Olson Property, which is that one-hundred-and-seventy acres at the, uh, northwest corner of U.S. Thirty-One and Renney School. The, there was a public hearing held for that rezoning. There was some comments, uh, from the adjacent property owners about some of the, uh, potential uses in that, uh, other planned districts in there because there's a mix of multifamily, commercial and industrial. Um, the Planning Commission did, uh, direct staff to prepare findings of fact. So we anticipate, uh, providing that at the next meeting in November for the Planning Commission. I think a critical part to that whole rezoning, since it's a very large area, multiple parcels, is how do we ensure that the, uh, services are there? The water sewer, uh, services as well as the roadway that's planned for, uh, to go from Renney School up to Meadow Lane. So that'll be important to how the timing works for the development of that. A couple of other projects, the True North, uh, gas station at the southeast corner of U.S. Thirty-One and South Airport Road. Uh, that site plan was approved by the Planning Commission. There was, there's going to be some changes to the driveway that goes out onto Thirty-One. We had some, uh, comments, uh, with M.D.O.T. in trying to, uh, make some changes there to address some of the auto accidents at that location. And then finally, uh, in terms of developments, the Grand Traverse Bay YMCA Phase Two, which is in addition to their existing facility on Silver Lake Road, uh, that was, uh, received, application was received by the Planning Commission and they'll schedule a public hearing for, uh, November. Did also just want to mention that on the planning side of activities for the Planning Commission, there will be a public input session, uh, prior to the next, uh, Planning Commission study on October twenty-ninth. That'll be from five-thirty to six-thirty P.M. in this room. And that's for, uh, the airport gateway discussion that the Planning Commission has been studying. It's roughly about a twelve-acre area or so, forth around the southwest corner of Townline Road at South Airport. So that's not necessarily a formal public hearing, but an opportunity just to hear from residents, property owners, business owners, uh, about that area. That's about it in terms of my highlights.
Was there any activity on the Smith Brothers' property at the meeting?
Yes, that was, uh, so that is, was introduced and, uh, scheduled for a public hearing. So that's the property that's, uh, on Cass Road just north of the, uh, Saban Data Center. The one question on that one, we just want to make sure, we are going to reach out to TCAPS just to see, you know, what their intent, continued intent for the use of the old elementary school there. Because of that split zoning, we figure that's probably why that split zoning is on that property is because at one time it was an active elementary school. So that's why they, uh, had it for lo, local commercial versus industrial. So we just want to coordinate with TCAPS since that abuts that property.
This involve some kind of cleanup of their collection?
Um, well, it has cleaned up, uh, this is just on the rezoning of the property, but we anticipate this would make it more viable for reuse and further cleanup of that. When the, um, portable storage solutions went in across the street, they obviously, they bought that, uh, business in terms of the containers and so forth. So that has helped quite a bit. But, uh, yeah, there's additional cleanup that needs to be on that property.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for John? All right. Thanks, John. Clerk's report. You know, Parks and Rec, I'm sorry, skipped over Parks and Rec.
It is submitted in writing.
All right, gotcha. All right, now clerk's report.
It's submitted in writing.
Is there not going here?
I've been working on the budget, uh, helping Chris and this, the manager and the supervisor prepare the budget, just been crunching the numbers and getting them in there.
Okay. Township Managers' Report.
All right, um, had a conversation with potential owner, or potential buyers of Ridge Forty-Five Apartments, and they were questioning us on whether or not the township may consider them for a pilot. Um, their purchase is contingent on them being approved for a pilot. Um, they said that right now, all those apartments are market rate. They would, um, request a pilot, um, making sixty percent of the current units at eighty percent AMI, so workforce housing. Um, there's other, the, part of that development is not built out completely. I think that's a hundred and some units and they wouldn't, they would plan on keeping those at market rate, but only adjusting sixty percent of what's currently there to like a workforce housing, um, rent amount. So this particular pilot process I'm unfamiliar with. I'm, uh, I'm familiar with the one that this board has approved in the past, just with our board approving it. There's a new process that I'm going to learn, if you choose to want me to follow through and look into it further, but this new pilot process requires the county board to approve it as, as well, along with, with us, kind of like an H.T.F.
And the State Tax Commission.
And the State Tax Commission. Um, so I don't believe this board has approved one like, you know, this might come before you for review and consideration. Um, but we, we told these individuals that we would float the idea by you to see if there's any interest in me pursuing it and educating myself and then the board, and then ultimately considering them for a pilot.
So you indicated that their purchase was contingent upon this? But I understood they purchased a couple of years ago.
So I don't know that. Uh, it, it made it sound as like the purchase is going on right now. They're purchasing it right now, this, this org, this company.
They paid off the mortgage and got a new mortgage.
That was for Oak Terrace.
This is totally.
This is Ridge's.
This is Ridge Forty-Five.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Yeah, so yeah, Ridge Forty-Five, um, new potential owners, um, you know, they, I, I think their funding through nonprofit organizations is contingent on them having like a pilot with some sort of workforce housing, some sustainability changes. Um, so, so that's required for the funding. So if they don't receive the pilot, then they most likely won't receive the funding to make the purchase.
Correct.
But, uh, I do have a meeting tomorrow, well, that's later on in my report, with County Brownfield Redevelopment, um, Director, uh, to further talk about this and learn. And, you know, if you want me to pursue it and bring it back to you for consideration in the future, I'm a hundred percent willing to do that.
I, I would be in favor of that. I think Polly's very familiar with the process. And, uh, she can probably help you figure out how that works in terms of the percentage of units that are workforce versus market.
Okay.
She's skilled in that.
So I just have one question. When they're saying sixty percent is going to be current workhouse?
Yes, sixty pers, so sixty percent of the current units.
So they'll have to decrease some of the people's rents? Okay. That was my question.
I'm fine with it.
So, um, okay, so I'll pursue that and bring it back to you in the future. Um, in the packet, under my, um, agenda item, there is board appointment list, um, indicating who is, uh, up at the end of the year. And I would ask that if you, um, have interest in staying in the current positions that you're in or trying out something new, to complete the one-page application that we have for board assignments and submit it to our administrative assistant, Karen Lever, or you can send her an email directly and not complete the application. So either way is, is acceptable. And the, um, you know, obviously, you know, you could submit for what you want and at the end of the day, it's the supervisor's, um, selection on where he wants to put people. So basically, he's going to consider your interest. And Karen, um, will email you the application tomorrow, the one-page application that you can fill out online, save it and email it back to her. So either way you want to do it, um, look for that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, the supervisor and I met with the CEO of the YMCA who gave us an update on their project. Um, they're going to be starting that next year, expanding the daycare center, the gymnasium, um, and, uh, some classroom space. And he also, um, they're looking for funding opportunities and one of those opportunities was a two-percent, um, grant through the, the tribe. And he is going to ask for this board's support in that effort. He's going to make application and similar to what we've done in the past, uh, the supervisor has signed the application and it has to be routed through municipality. Um, and that, so the, the CEO has asked, um, if we would do that. So I will bring that back in the future, once I receive documents from them, which I, I kind of expect to bring that to you at our next meeting. Um, the Personnel Committee will continue to work on our compensation policy that we recently, uh, mentioned and, um, update our employee handbook as needed. Um, we do have an ethics policy that was created back in, I believe, twenty-nineteen. Um, so I am coordinating a meeting with the Ethics Committee just to review that, to see if it needs to be updated or changed. So that is occurring. Uh, I met with the Goodwill and CEO recently, uh, at the coffee shop on Cass Road. That's a really nice place, so if you haven't been there, try it out. Pretty neat. And I also met with the city manager downtown, um, just as a network and relationship building, uh, meeting. And he and I on our calendars, uh, have set meetings every other month. And, um, we both agreed to meet regularly if we need to, to deal with issues between our two municipalities. So, um, he's going to be good to work with, I think. So, um, that is all I have.
All right. Any other questions for Chris? All right. I see our County Commissioner, Fern, did you have a, a report?
Thank you. As you all know, Blair Township has their trustees meeting same time, same night, so I have to go from there here, um, just this week of the month. Um, but I'm Fern Spence, Grand Traverse County Commission District Four, um, for those of you visiting tonight. I want to give an update on tomorrow's agenda at the BOC meeting and then a brief, um, summary of what happened at our last BOC meeting, October seventh. Um, tomorrow, we will be go, going over ARPA updates and getting some information from those areas that have not used all their ARPA funds, um, such as Blair Township. We're going to be discussing their water supply and water treatment progress update, for example. And we have a lot of appointments to, um, committees within the county. Um, this is for all of you, anyone who wants to serve on a county, um, board, um, like the Airport Authority, the Library. We are looking for people to apply to the Board of Public Works, the Department of Health and Human Services, and the Community Corrections Advisory Board has a vacancy as well, as well as upcoming Beta, Library, like I said, and Airport Authority. I know I'm missing one, but that's, you can go to our county website to learn more about where our vacancies are. Um, that's one of the most important things I wanted to share with you tonight. Uh, resolution in support of October's Breast Cancer Awareness Month will be happening tomorrow. And, um, as well as at our last BOC meeting, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month and the Women's Resource Center provided a great presentation and announcement regarding that. We are going to deliberate entering into a five-year contract with Axon Enterprises Incorporated to continue services related to body cameras and evidence storage for our law enforcement, which is going to be included in our twenty-twenty-six budget. And we're going to discuss sending a letter to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources supporting a pedestrian bridge over U.S. Thirty-One, which is not Garfield Township, I know, but it's, it's East Bay, but it's, it's, um, kind of been in the news and it's important to a lot of people. We always want to take safety into consideration of our visitors as well as our residents. Specific to Garfield Township, the asphalt is going to be replaced at Medali Park. And we're going to delegate to the Building Authority Oversight for Project Alpha as part of our construction management contract with Cunningham Limp and authorize county administration to issue a request for proposals for local architecture and engineering services that might be necessary during the construction of Project Alpha up on Lafrania Road. Then just a quick summary of what we talked about on October seventh at our last BOC meeting, which feels like it's old news, but it's, it's kind of important. The marijuana funds grant application round has closed for the first round of applications. Um, review and distribution is the next step for that. Opioid settlement funds is, um, next up. Right now, it's interesting to note that one-point-six billion dollars are in, um, opioid settlement funds within the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan has now distributed seventy million dollars of that so far, but that amount needs to stretch over a twenty-year period. So that we will allocate, the state of Michigan will allocate that money in order to have it, um, be sustainable over twenty years. Um, we definitely need some changes to our physical structures where we're conducting our operations within the county. So we're going to need, we're going to start a professional process to determine how to navigate through our upcoming changes, which makes us take, we have to take into consideration the operations of Lafrania Road, Boardman Avenue and Woodmere Avenue. Um, where are we going to go? Um, what kind of campus do we want? What kind of budget do we have? What kind of timeline are we looking at? So we're currently in the process of going through, um, hiring professional services to help us determine whether to stay or go, how much we're going to spend, when we're going to start. Um, are we going to renovate or build new? And we'll start a feasibility study with professional assistants. That's it. Any questions or?
No, you talked, uh, last meeting, Commissioner Flynn said you were finalizing the prosperity plan. We're going to be bringing it back to the townships. Has that been completed and when will that be brought back?
I'm not aware. I don't know. Yeah.
Okay.
The prosperity plan. It's funny, I, I don't, it doesn't ring a bell with my brain tonight, but I'll make a note of it. Thank you. Okay. We're all good?
Any other questions for Fern?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fern.
All right. Supervisor's report, just a couple of things. Chris touched on the, uh, meeting with YMCA. It was a really good meeting, uh, brought us up to speed on their Phase Two expansion and, uh, a lot of the things they're doing over there with, uh, students after school. Doing a lot of great things, quite a, quite a complex. And I guess we, you know, fortunate to have that in our township as a, as a source and as a, as a resource, I should say. So a good meeting there. Um, a couple of weeks ago, the BPW Finance Committee, uh, we met with some representatives from the county and some initial conversations around, uh, uh, you know, uh, re-looking at the relationship between the county and BPW. There's been a lot of hurdles over time and, you know, how we can work through those and do things a little differently, uh, for BPW. And, um, you know, there's been talk of going to an authority and, and breaking away and, uh, instead of doing that, if we can work some of the, some of the hurdles out, we'll, we'll do that. We started, uh, those conversations a couple of weeks ago, first of many, I'm sure. Um, tomorrow, uh, we have a meeting with the city, uh, ongoing, uh, negotiations and conversations around the water. And we hope to quickly come to resolution on the, the commons. Uh, that project's nearing completion, so, uh, the, the final pieces of the water solution for the commons need to come into place pretty quickly. We're meeting with, uh, the city tomorrow. And the chief mentioned PAR Plan, they got some money from PAR Plan. On the PAR Plan Board of Directors, we met the Grant Committee last week and reviewed grant applications from all over the state and, I think, approved, not even announced yet, but the total, like $157,000 in grants, fifty-some applications. So a lot of good things, PAR Plan's supporting, and it sounds like this was outside of that, but some education for firefighters are really about prevention and, you know, saving money in the long run by preventing injuries, lawsuits, that type of thing. So we did that last week, so that's pretty much everything I had. Any questions for me? All right. Moving on, unfinished business. Item 7A, public hearing, consideration of a resolution approving the Special Assessment District, creating a special assessment role and authorizing the public hearing, authorizing a public hearing on October 28th, 2025, for Silver Lake Mill Foil Control Resolution 2025-26, six dash T, Pren B. So. I don't know, Chris, anything additional? Should just open up the public hearing?
I would just open up the meeting.
Okay, all right. So this is pretty well-known for the residents around Silver Lake. So no surprise to the folks in this district. It's an ongoing Special Assessment District to control Eurasian mill foil in Silver Lake. So at this point, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anybody like to come speak to this issue, please, or topic, I should say. Please come forward and let us know what you have to say.
Good evening. My name is Scott Adgen, I'm a member of the Silver Lake Improvement Association. I'm also in charge of the Environmental Committee. I'm here to state my concerns that we've done a great job with your help and with Blair Township's help, as far as collecting the Special Assessment District money to pay for this, because this is something, looking at the numbers, that no individual would be able to afford. I figured out some time ago what it actually costs us each, and we're paying $68.40 a year each individual resident who is paying into this. That works out to basically $5.70 a month. I don't know about you, I'm paying over $2,000 to insure my cars a year. Okay? And that's gone up like 35% in the last three years. So Chuck Corn was very instrumental back in the day when I started this in 2009 with him to get this all set up. And I'm very grateful to him for doing that. If we had not started that, our lake would not look like it looks today. And I guarantee you, nobody would be happy. I mean, our shoreline would be completely gone. Your docks would be going out 100 feet so that you could have a boat. And we'd be going around a little bit of a pond with what we had left, okay? So hopefully, there's not going to be a lot of, everybody I've ever talked to, and I've gotten a lot of compliments on the work that we've done, to keep the lake as beautiful as it is. So hopefully, we're not going to get a lot of disgruntled people, I don't think we will. I'm sure you're going to get a couple, but not a lot. And hopefully, we can convince them that, you know, this is definitely worth it. I know that Ken Kaufman wrote a letter and sent it to you. I saw a copy of that. So there's really not a lot that I can say above and beyond what he's done. Again, thank you all for everything that the two townships have done to allow us to keep this project going. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to come forward and speak to this? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for your consideration in your packet and page, I believe page 94 near packet.
You want the motion?
I believe so, yeah.
Or you want discussion?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve, for the approval of Special Assessment District Order Creating Special Assessment Role and Authorizing, wait, is that the right, is that the wrong one? Is that, that is the right one. And authorizing public hearing for Silver Lake Eurasian Water Mill Foil Control.
Already did that.
It'll be Resolution 2025-26-T-Pren B.
Yes.
Okay. Have support on that?
I'll support it.
Okay, motion made, supported to approve Resolution 2025-26-T-Pren B. And that is consideration of the resolution approving the Special Assessment District for the special assessment role, and then authorizing a public hearing, giving everyone an opportunity to review the role and speak to that on October 28th. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing done, and could we have a roll on that, please?
Sure. Lap?
Yes.
Schmuckle?
Yes.
Elle McManus?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Justinelli?
Yes.
And Jay McManus?
Yes, thank you. All right. 7B, consideration of amendment to the Capital Improvement Plan to the purchase of a tractor for our parks department.
Planning Director, I think, is going to come up and speak to that?
Good evening again. This is presenting to you as an amendment to the Capital Improvement Plan and request for purchase of a tractor for the parks. The plan was adopted by the Township Board back on August 26th, and there are proposed three changes here, or three considerations to the plan document. One of them is the pole barn upgrades at River East Recreation Area. This has already been identified in the plan, it's just pulling it out and identifying it as a separate project, because it may be incurred as a separate project outside of the Phase III improvements, which are extensive improvements, including the bathrooms, sidewalks, and the parking lot. So it's just pulling it out as a separate item earmarked for $100,000, which is what it was under that Phase III improvements. There's also a request for purchase of a tractor for the park staff for park maintenance, and that is identified in there in the amount of $48,437. And then the last item is something that was in front of the parks' first discussion and is now being presented here. This was a part of the Mountain Biking Subcommittee that deals with the Commons Natural Area, has been trying to identify cooperative efforts to improve the trails out there. And from that committee and discussion with the various representatives from the mountain biking community have identified a catalyst project. So that is intended to be a demonstration project in terms of what some of the future trails could be out at that location. So that's gone through the Parks and Rec Commission, it's being identified in here. Even though this is a project that is going to be funded through private donations, and there isn't any money being contributed by the township, nonetheless, it is an improvement that will be located at the Commons Natural Area, so it will be on park property. So that's important to recognize that. So when you look at the language in terms of the Parks and Rec tables there, you'll see the mountain bike catalyst project, trail demonstration project, 100% self-funded through private donations. And it's roughly estimated to be $38,000, and there's a township share of $0. So NIMBA, the Northern Michigan Mountain Bike Association, will be kind of the fiduciary in terms of collecting those funds that will be used for that particular project. So there's also representative here, Tim Poelium, representing the mountain bike group as well, so if he's here to answer questions and so forth on the particulars of the project. This, at this point, is just an amendment to the plan to identify it. It's essentially an introduction. There, we'll need to become, come back at a later point to have a formal agreement between the township and NIMBA in terms of how this, the funding will work and the improvements will be made. But it's a project planned for 2026.
All right.
I have a question. Is this, this trail part of what was kind of what our Parks Board wanted? Or is it just what they wanted? I mean...
Well, there was, so in the, for the Commons Natural Area, we did a design plan, and this is one segment of that design plan. So it is identified in our plan for this improvement. So it's, and it's intended to, you know, all the trails that are out there pretty much are never been, were never designed trails or built trails, people just kind of did their own thing.
I know, we know.
So this is intended to, and part of that is, some of the problems of those trails out there is they're going down fall lines, so there's erosion and everything, they're not properly built. This will be a properly designed and built trail that will be as kind of a demonstration of what can potentially the rest of that area look like.
Molly, do you have a question?
Yeah, well, I guess my first question is, so they're going to come back to us with design specs on these? Those hills are, it's sand, a big sand pile up there. So erosion is a concern of mine. So is there an engineer that's working with them to make sure that we have stone or some other way to fortify those trails so we don't end up with a big washouts and that kind of thing?
Right. So there is the trail proposal in there, which they are looking at retaining a contractor to do that as far as kind of a design-build situation. So they are ones that are, Trail Sense is the company that'll be working in collaboration with NIMBA in terms of the design of that and recognizing, you know, those types of factors in terms of soil, drainage, grade, so forth, sightlines, how it's all going to be designed. So at this point, we're just, they have kind of outlined a tentative proposal in terms of how that will be going. I think some of the details in terms of the agreement might also have some more information at that point.
Okay, so before shovels go in the ground on that, we'll see some kind of engineering specs?
Well, I don't, I don't know if there'll be an actual engineering, like, per se, most of these trail companies are really designed for doing hiking trails, biking trails, and so forth. I don't know if it's necessarily like a, you know, township engineer-stamped type of project, but I don't know.
But it'll be something more than, we promise it won't erode.
Right, exactly.
Okay, then that's, and then on this demonstration project area, where are they coming in? Are they coming in off Long Lake Road to do that, or?
In terms of the construction, or the actual location?
What's the entrance to get to the trails? The trail is going to be, as I'm reading this, we have the little rectangle on here, and it looks like, then, I don't know how far it would be from Long Lake Road, but are they coming in from that trailhead that's out on Long Lake Road to access this demonstration project, or?
In terms of like the contractor accessing, is that what you're talking about? Or just the trail design itself?
Yeah, if it's going to be mountain biking, we're going to have a spot where they can park and where they can get their bikes and go to get back to that.
Right, so there's the Long Lake trailhead, there's also the trailhead that we're going to be doing at Red Drive as well, plus there's just the ways of getting into the system with, not necessarily needing a park, but riding into the park itself. This was a segment they identified, because there's already some existing trail there that can be altered and fit in there, and it kind of heads down from the High Point, heading towards the north, towards the Long Lake Road trailhead.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Do we have an entrance from Copper Ridge as well?
Yes.
We have a long way to get to there.
I have a question too. So is the intention for this to be more like Palmer Woods, where it's just recreational and kind of a bup, rup, rup? Or are there races, are there, what's the long-term intention of the trail?
Can Molly come up and he can probably mention, talk to you a little bit more?
No, Mike. Tim Poelium, 516 West 11th in Traverse City. Tonight, I'm here as a representative for Northern Michigan Mountain Bike Association. I've been working on or riding trails around the community for a long time, including at the Commons. I was actually part of the plan with ECT and Rock Solid when the master plan came out for trails at the Commons. One of the representatives that helped lay out the mountain bike trails. We kind of did an overlay originally that tried to use some of the existing trails, would blend with the multi-use trail that's going to be going in and gets people from one side of the property to the other. We didn't really pick any trails to come specifically out to any trailhead, because we know, unfortunately, just in general, that trailhead parking and access to the park somewhat limited, and a lot of it is through other private property like Copper Ridge or through Minervini's property. So there are a couple of small trailheads. This trail will be kind of more like up and down and flowy, kind of a more modern style, like a Palmer Woods. There's a lot of trails up there now. Some of those trails are in the overlay, they're part of that overlay, they'll need lines cleaned up and things like that. We did clean up already some of the lines on the far side over, I call it like the Foxcraft Ridge that comes down from Foxcraft Estates toward the back of. Some of those things have been cleaned up over the past year or two, working with Parks and Rec for sightlines and trail interactions across kind of the main fire road hiking trail going up there. We've deleted or eliminated some of those trails, but still, for the most part, they're just all kind of the old, original road, multi-use trails. This particular project, the one that we want to do kind of as like a demonstration project, we know that the trail programs are coming, and MBA and other organizations like ourselves are working with cities and municipalities around northern Michigan. We have Tomba doing Trails in Potaski, Boeing City, and West Michigan Mountain Bike Association. We've been working with the county and John Chase, and we've been building out trails there, and we've been working with the DNR and the Pier Market State Forest. We've been building and maintaining trails there. Sometimes trails, especially with the topography and the soil conditions that we have at the Commons, we don't take that on ourselves, we bring in a professional trail builder. Typically, we look for trail builders that are something called IMBA certified. There's an International Mountain Bike Association, they are kind of the standard or the engineered stamp for mountain bike trails. They understand grades and fall lines and soil types, and so there are, it's a little bit different than, you know, in my early 50s now, I moved here in '92. I've been riding up there this whole time, so I've seen multiple trail closures, a lot of rogue trails, a lot of negative trail interactions between users. And what we're trying to do now is kind of modernize this trail system, allow everyone to kind of be able to peacefully cohabitate. And we're trying to build trails that we can leave behind that don't require a bunch of maintenance for township parks staff, but also that's easy for our volunteers to be able to get out there and help. So definitely things like armoring, cleaning up sightlines, lowering grades, having grade changes when we have a fall line trail so that we don't end up with erosion. So we change direction quite a bit. So there's like these standards that the professional trail builders use now, and we work with them to lay those standards out. This trail is already a heavily-used trail across a lot of different user groups. It's a trail that's been there a very long time, we see NORTD kids up on there. We see just kind of a wide set of skills, because it's one of the more used bike trails. It's just pretty washed out and rid up, so we thought it would be a nice one to just kind of show people, this is what we're talking about, because people who haven't been to a trail system like Palmer Woods, it's hard for people to envision, well, what do you do on such steep grades and with all the sand? And, you know, it might seem overwhelming, but we actually have really good ways of handling it now. The technology's come a long way, just in, even the machines that we use, you know, they're 32 to 36-inch-wide trail machines, walk behind little mini axes. You can come in and put in a trail on some pretty amazing topography and leave behind something that's low-maintenance, fun to ride, and safer for everybody. So that's what we're trying to accomplish with this. And I just felt with the improvements that are coming up the next year or two there, that this would be a chance for us to kind of roll up our sleeves, get an agreement in place, some sort of MOU that allows our volunteers to be out there helping as well. They're already out there doing stuff anyways, whether they should be or not. This would remove the liability from the township, it would form a formal relationship, and it would kind of take away that adversarial role that unfortunately, it feels like there's always been with that property, and would allow us to do something nice. And, you know, we'll raise the money, we'll put it in, people can see it, hopefully everyone raves about it. And then it'll just make it easier to work together as we roll out a bigger plan for that property that has some mountain bike-specific trails, so.
Great, thank you. John, if I could ask you a couple of questions, thanks for your, thanks for your information. The, this has soon been vetted, I'm sure they've made presentations with the Parks Committee. I'm sure they've made presentations with the Parks Commission and they've supported it. Who's going to be the over, who's going to oversee them? Who's going to make sure they follow the directions that we give them and the areas that we give them? Who's going to oversee that construction?
Well, I'd anticipate it'd be our staff.
Okay.
Park staff. I, they'll, like you mentioned, they'll have to come back with level formal MOU in terms of the actual project and details of that too.
I'm sure Parks and Recs has, has seen the full presentation from the group and what they want to do.
Correct.
So, uh, yeah, I think we, I don't think we need to see the whole thing again if they've already vetted it. So I think my concern would be, are they going to be, you know, who's, who's going to be the oversight to make sure? Historically, there's been some real issues with trails at the park, at the Commons. I mean, we can go back in time and I just think we need to make sure that it's been, it's being done to our standards and what we want done, so.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Molly?
Uh, to Lori's question, I'm not sure you quite answered it. Um, she was asking whether there'd be races or any events or any of that kind of thing there. Is that envisioned at all?
Well, I, I'll just.
John, John should be able to answer those questions.
Well, I think any activities like that typically have to be approved by the township. Those are, that's township parks. So that, that it would be, whether there are races there or not, something that the township would have to approve.
So each time, if they wanted to do a special?
Yeah, I don't think, and I don't think we have anything that's approved for that park right now.
Nothing approved?
Yeah, I mean, it's not to say they couldn't, there couldn't be something proposed in the future. I'm just saying that right now, we don't have anything. And, uh, certainly would be something that has to, obviously has to get approved by the township. Use of that property.
Okay, thanks.
Now, Chris, so this, this, um, is a package. Basically, I'm seeing the, the revision of the CIP plan and the purchase. Are we handling this all in one?
No, there's two different ones here.
Other, okay, all right. So I know there's different bids on the tractor. So, well, I'm, I may have any other questions for John before we move on from that? Is that everything you had to cover, John, on that?
Yep.
Okay, any questions for John? Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the amended to the capital improvement plan as attached to Planning Department Report 2025 dash 118.
Support.
Motion being supported to approve the amendment to the capital improvement plan as attached, uh, in Planning Department Report 2025 dash 118. Any further discussion on that motion?
Question?
Yeah.
Um, is that for the pole barn?
And the.
The tractor.
And, no, the tractor's the second one. That's a second, that's a separate motion.
So is that for the pole barn?
And them to do the trail.
It's a, it's a change to the actual, it's a change to all of it, including the tractor.
Right.
And then we're going to make a motion to purchase the actual tractor. So with the motion she just made, all the amendments to the capital improvement plan highlighted, the pole building, the tractor and so on, it's, it's all in this motion.
All of that.
But the actual purchase of the tractor is what we're handling in the next motion.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just talking about this one, okay.
Yes.
All right.
Any further discussion or questions on that motion? Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I make a motion to approve the bid of the Kadop.
Kubota.
Kubota, God, I can't, why can't I say that? Kubota LX3520HS DC dash four-wheel drive tractor with air-conditioned cab in the amount of $48,437.
Support.
Motion being supported to approve the purchase of the Kubota tractor for the Parks Department, a total of $48,437. Um, any further discussion on that motion? Chris?
I just want to add that we reached out to vendors that were affiliated with my deal. Um, so those are probably the lowest prices you can get versus buying it from, you know, somebody who sells retail. So we did our due diligence in pricing.
Okay, all right, okay. Uh, any other further discussion on that motion? Um, Ann, could you go ahead and take a roll on that one, please?
Schmuckle?
Yes.
Was that Augustinelli?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Corn?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Lapp?
Yes.
L McManus?
Yes.
And Jay McManus?
Yes, thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Um, new business, a consideration of a pilot application for Oak Terrace Apartments, Resolution 2025 dash 32 dash T. And that's page 123 of your packet. Chris, did you want to touch on this one?
So our assessor is here and she'll.
Oh, she's going to do that? Okay, great.
Conversation.
Good evening. Polly Cairns, your assessor. Uh, we have two applications on the packet for Oak Terrace and Oak Park. Uh, they previously did have pilots, but the property had been purchased. And so that removed the previous pilots that were in place. And the request is now for pilots going forward in 2026, maintaining the low income that is there for their units and keeping the residents in place. Uh, the property purchaser, Steve, is in the audience as well. If anybody has any questions for him? Is there anything else? What, what can I answer for you?
The approval is, does not require a public hearing?
No, this would be bringing it to, we're introducing it. It looks like, you know, from reviewing in the past, there's been, uh, different ways of things were handled. So we're trying to bring them forth as an introduction. And then they would do a special, the hearing would be next, the 28th.
Okay.
Yep, to try to keep things going in the same fashion forward.
Very good.
So we wouldn't need a motion on this tonight, would we?
Well, with the schedule of public hearing, we would.
Schedule of public hearing.
Yeah, if we're introducing in tonight, the schedule of public hearing on the 28th, we'd need a motion to that effect on both, so, as we get to them. So, any questions for Polly?
Do we have rules on extending these pilots? I, I don't really remember us extending a pilot past 20 years or so. And these are, this is extending.
This is not an extension from the original owner. This is the, uh, same location, but you've got a new owner now who wants to retain the rents at the levels that they were. Um, so this would be a new application. It's just, it's kind of interesting because it's a renewal, if you will, but it's not. Um, it's the same properties, but it's a new owner. Uh, the previous one was under a MISTDA and there was MISTDA financing. And now they're, uh, one of the properties has been paid for and the other property has conventional financing with it. So it's a little bit different than what you, what we've seen. I think historically, almost most of the pilots are MISTDA-based income or MISTDA-based finance. So this is a little bit newer for us. But at the same time, it's all appropriate with the, when the pilot guidelines to maintain those rents.
So it's for 15 years, is this what I'm seeing?
That's the proposed, yes.
What was the previous pilot, do you know?
Uh, I believe I have it in your packet.
Which is the term of the mortgage or 50 years, whichever came first.
Fifty years, which came first, okay.
Yeah, and often the pilots come in for a 15-year and then they ask for a 15-year renewal, a possible 15-year renewal with another 15-year renewal. Generally, they're 45 years, has been my experience.
Okay.
The request for the pilot is at what rate?
At what rate?
Yeah.
Uh, we're looking at a 4% rate on this as the request for this one with a 5% MSA, 5 mil MSA.
Any other questions for Polly? Chris, so I'm right, we're just, we're introducing and you're, are you asking us to schedule these for a public hearing?
Yeah, just introduction and then a motion to set a public hearing, um, for the 28th at the 6:00 PM meeting.
This is, so I have to have two separate motions, one for Oak Terrace and one for?
Yeah.
Oak Park?
Yeah, we're just doing Oak Terrace right now, first of all.
Uh, I make a motion that we have a public hearing on the pilot for Oak Terrace on October 28th.
Yes, yep.
So we're not voting on the resolution, I just scheduled a public hearing?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Support.
A motion being supported to schedule a public hearing on October 28th to discuss Resolution 2025 dash 32 dash T, which is going to be an application for pilot for Oak Terrace Apartments. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, I don't think Polly's going to sit down. I think we're now going on to consideration of pilot application for Oak Park Apartments. No, I don't think you're going to sit down. Are you going to stay, I didn't tell you this, no, I said, I think you're just going to stay up there. Apologize. Yeah, I want you to go back and forth a couple of times. Uh, so consideration of pilot application for Oak Park Apartments, Resolution 2025 dash 33 dash T. I'm sure this conversation is pretty similar, so.
Yes, uh, same thing. Uh, this was purchased in October of '24, where the other property was purchased in, uh, November of '23. So that removed the existing pilot that was in place. And the request is for a new pilot for Oak Park, um, for the 15 years at the 4% with a 5% MSA.
Any kind of questions for Polly on this one?
I make a motion that we have a public hearing and pilot application for Oak Park Apartments on October 28th.
Support.
Motion being supported to schedule a public hearing on October 28th, uh, for consideration of the pilot for Oak Park Apartments, which is going to be Resolution 2025 dash 33 dash T. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Polly.
I can sit down.
No, you can do whatever you want. All right. Uh, new, new business item C, consideration of a proposal from Utility Financial Solutions, uh, to provide a water and sewer financial projection rate study. Um, so this is, uh, driven by some conversation at the BPW level that we brought up. For those of you who aren't aware, um, the city is doing a $41 million upgrade to its sewage treatment plant, uh, starting, I believe, next year. And, uh, we did a full sewer and water study about three years ago, uh, as a township, but, uh, it did not take into consideration, um, this $41 million upgrade that's, that's, uh, coming down the pipe now. So we thought it was appropriate to, uh, look at a rate study that would incorporate that into consideration. And we're going to go ahead and do water at the same time and in anticipation of, uh, any expansions regionally from a water system standpoint. So, um, we're just looking to, uh, you know, approve that, that study. So Chris, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to say about that?
No, I think you summed it up. Um, so basically, we're looking for a motion from the board to approve for you to sign the contract.
I make a motion that our supervisor sign the contract with UFS.
I'll second that motion.
Motion being supported to authorize supervisor to sign the contract with USF for a sewer and water rate projection study. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Okay, item D, a consideration of authorizing township supervisor to sign Angel Care Childcare Grant Traverse Ban 2% Grant Application, which is in item 182 in your packet.
Good evening, Board. Um, if you don't know me, uh, my name is Marisa Corn. I live at 4576 Lewan Lane in Blair Township, but I'm here representing Angel Care Childcare. I am the president of the Board, um, at 1514 Burnley Road. Uh, we love our new digs, um, but it's definitely been, um, an emotional experience, um, moving a lot of stuff, outfitting, um, classrooms, pre-existing classrooms to fit licensing guidelines, safety guidelines, um, between Bureau of Fire, um, local state jurisdictions. It's been quite, quite a ride. Um, but we've got a great team. Um, but what we're asking for tonight is, uh, your signature on the grant for the Grant Traverse Ban of Ottawa and Chipewa Indians, um, for $50,000 to help with our playground climbing equipment for our preschool and infant toddler classrooms. Um, this also would give us a, a shock absorber surface to really absorb, especially, you know, kids, kids just like to have fun and jump. And, you know, I'm a huge proponent of safety as a member of our safety committee at my workplace. Um, and, you know, anything that we can do to, you know, make things more safe and especially like go with more of the licensing requirements and, you know, have a great, you know, enriching experience for all of our really cute kids, but keep them safe at the same time is, you can't even put a price on that.
We've been pretty successful in the last couple of applications have been awarded, correct?
Yes.
Chris, you want to say?
Yeah, the Board has, um, um, authorized the supervisor to, to sign two prior applications on their behalf. And they've both been awarded both times. So this.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2025 dash 31.
Nope, nope, you're too far. Yep, just authorized me to sign the application.
I'm trying to get this moving, moving.
Yeah, I see that, but.
Thanks, Denise.
I would make a motion that we authorize our township supervisor to sign the Angel Care Childcare Grant Traverse County Ban 2% Grant Application.
Support.
I'll second.
Motion being supported to authorize supervisor to sign the grant application. 2% Grant Traverse Ban Grant Application for Child Care, Angel Care Childcare. Any further discussion on that motion?
It shouldn't have been a motion, really, because there's no money involved.
There's no one.
Money involved.
Well, you still have to approve me signing it, so. You still have to give me the, give me the authority, so.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is item E, consideration of Resolution 2025 dash 31 dash T, which is a township supervisor salary adjustment. Chris?
So as you know, we recently embarked on a wage compensation study, um, for all employees at the, at the township. And during that process, um, you know, evaluated the supervisor's, um, role here, my role. Um, it's been roughly a year, um, with our new administrative setup. And, you know, I feel that, um, you know, for the supervisor to be more effective, um, in his role, um, that he, he needs more time, um, to, um, carry out his duties that is, that are assigned to him. And, um, you know, with the wage that he was, um, given early on, you know, I don't believe that it covers the amount of time that is necessary for him to carry out his duties. And when you consider the wage study that was completed and the data, um, to have it align more with what, the amount of time that he truly needs to spend day to day, um, it's reflective in the resolution that's in front of you. Um, also, um, we felt it was important for the supervisor to, um, be available at the township as a new opportunity for the, the public to, um, to meet with him, to have conversations, businesses. Um, and it's, it's a day that you can expect him to be available, uh, not only to the public, but staff as well. Because right now, he, he typically doesn't hold office hours and is, you know, available, you know, when, when we call him and if he's available, then he, he comes in. But it'd be nice to set some time, uh, timeframe where staff know he's here and the public, um, could come in and, and meet with him if they need to. So, um, so that, that's the resolution that's in front of you. And I'll take any questions that you may have.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2025 dash 31 dash T, the Township Supervisor Salary.
I will second that motion.
Motion was being supported to consider, adopt Resolution 2025 dash 31 dash T. Um, any further discussion on that motion? Ann, can we have a roll on that, please?
Schmuckle?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Augustinelli?
Yes.
L McManus?
Yes.
Lapp?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
And Jay McManus?
Yes. All right, moving on, uh, public comment. Our second and final public comment of the evening. So if anybody has anything like to come forward and talk to us about, please come on forward.
They're running up again, Joe.
I know, they're not, they're not beating a path to the microphone. Doesn't work anyway. So we'll go ahead and close public comment and, uh, move on to other business. Any other business come before the Board this evening?
Our next budget meeting is Monday, the 27th.
27th at 3:00 PM.
27 at 3:00 PM. And then we have a board meeting the next evening. And it looks like a packed agenda. We got a couple of public hearings on that, so. Any other comments or questions before come the Board? Business to come before the Board this evening?
Ridgeview Court looks amazing.
It does.
I want to thank Garfield Township for going through with it. It's wonderful. They did, Elmer's did an awesome job.
Got some great comments, not only Ridgeview, a lot of great comments about Potter. Uh, so the, you know, the Road Commission's done some really nice projects this year and, and, um, Silver Pines, a lot of re, reshaping and, and tar and chip.
Awesome job.
They have done a nice job this year, so. Anything else come before the Board? Not at entertaining, we'll listen to adjourn.
So moved.
More adjourned.
I hope. I hope.